Sorry, we're a little behind. We had to walk over here because the other meeting ran a little late. So call that maybe the whole meeting for June 10th order. Please call the roll.
Sergeant?
Here.
Alderman Tlakka?
Here.
Alderman Mayor is Watson, can I be captured?
Here.
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 Captain?
Here.
Here. First up, we have approval of the meeting minutes from May 13th.
Approval?
Second.
Second, any discussion on the minutes? You're seeing none, all's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The opposed? Minutes are approved. First discussion, item 04. Time allowing. First up is Mequon Commons Public Engagement Summary Results. If you can walk us through that, we have Kim and Jack to talk us through the preliminary reports from our consultants.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. We've completed Phase 1. Oh, I just told not to use it.
Yeah, that one. It's going to be back to this one since.
No.
Thank you. Okay, now I don't have to tone it down. So we've completed Phase 1 of the project. That phase included, I mean, late coordination and logistics in terms of the project schedule, issues and opportunities, as well as what the engagement needs of recity were. Then our consultants were here to onsite field work, baseline data collection, and then inventory and evaluation of all of the previous reports and all of our facilities, subs and amenities. And then there was also a project brand that was created, which is Mequon Commons Master Plan. And then we really kicked off the engagement session. So there was stakeholder focus groups, which all of you participated in. That was two full days that the consultant hosted. And all of the attendees that we asked to join us did take the opportunity to attend and provide their opinions. And then we had a visioning open house. We have one over at the public market. And then the consultants were also at the festival in May. So there were some common themes that came out of all of that inventory and engagement. One is a truly connected downtown core, not only from a physical standpoint, but also engagement of activities into the community, the commercial development, and then the public open space that's within the civic campus. Civic reinvestment, so obviously, you know, we're realizing that we've got aging infrastructure. So investing in that infrastructure, investing in flexible year-round activities and amenities that can be enjoyed by a diverse group of ages, and as well as identifying as a priority that an adequate baseball facility is in need for the future. The third component was access to nature, so expansion of access from the civic campus outward to the neighborhood, making sure residents in the neighborhood have convenient access to the civic campus and enjoy that open space. And one of the aesthetics that was really desired was really sustainable landscape and native aesthetics instead of, you know, really formalized aesthetic. And then sustainable growth, which, you know, Alderman Tlakka and I never just talked about. It's been a common theme for decades, right, in Mequon, that we want to hold on to Mequon's character, but also have thoughtful and, you know, well-placed growth. So before we talk about next phases, really the heart of the discussion today is to talk about what the results are. And we talked a little bit about those stakeholders and those open houses. We talked about how to connect and connect this area to the rest of the neighborhood. Throughout the document that was provided, you also were able to see the frequency of use of these spaces. Everything from City Hall to the Riverwalk to the pool. There's an evaluation of both whether you enjoy the use, like the use of this location, and what do you feel about the aesthetic of that particular space as well. So I'm not going to go through each one of those individually. I think it was pretty consistent, for the most part consistent, whether the results came from the open house at the public market or whether the results came from the festival pop-up booth that they had. And then they talked about really special amenities as part of the civic campus. And some of the things that really shines through is what they called stars. So those were actually used as raised high in terms of their desired use and also high in terms of the likability of the aesthetics of the amenity there. So some of the stars in the Mequon civic campus include the library, the inner urban trail, and then the festivals. And some of the hidden gems, which means with a light they use, but not necessarily all of the aesthetic of it. And so that included City Hall, the Riverwalk, and Renneke Field. And then spaces to be reimagined, both the Renneke Field, the playground, ranked really as an asset, but not in its current form because of its age, and then also the pool. So those were some of the categories of amenities throughout the civic campus. And they really broke them down based on use as well as aesthetic. And then really some of the special amenities that were identified, and that's on one of the last pages of your documents. They broke those down into open space features, buildings, the pool and aquatics, and then special amenities. And they listed anything that's turning 50% or higher in terms of a preference. And so there are a lot of opportunities to explore on that list, Jackie. Hopefully, it's the last, it's the very last question for the make you. Keep going. There. So, you know, we've got a lot of opportunities to explore. And on the other, on the pages prior to this, there are a number of specific amenities that did not rate very well. So, you know, this is going to help push us forward in case two to talk a little bit more about what, or tell us decide a little bit in better form what alternatives and concepts should be explored. So I want to give the council an opportunity to talk about those results and charity feedback with us. But maybe before we do that, I'll just inform you of what's up and coming for Phase 2. So the results of all of this engagement and these opportunities will start to work with the consultants to develop some concepts and alternatives. And we'll come up with some preliminary designs. They'll work through those designs with the steering committee, as well as the park and open space board. And then we will either do an open house immediately after that, or we will come back to the council in August to present those preliminary concepts and alternatives with all of you. And then we'll consider whether we go to the open house before your meeting or after. And then the input from both the council's perspective on those alternative concepts and designs, as well as the input that we then receive from the open house, will allow us to start to make some plan refinements. And as we work through what I would call really then the draft final, the consultant's going to help assign some cost estimates to those variations of plans. And then, of course, throughout the process, we'll be checking with the steering committee and the park and open space board. And then Phase 3 would be ultimately the draft final plan, which the council will see as well. So right now, we're targeting probably that August council meeting to come back to you with those alternative preliminary concepts. So with that, I really want to hear from you guys. There was a lot of detail in the packet, but I thought it was laid out really well and really, you know, digestible. So if there's anything in particular you want us to take back to the consultants, we're certainly here to capture all of that. Thank you.
Yeah, so anything you like, and maybe more importantly, if there's anything you just absolutely don't like. Easier to not agree on what we like, but things that you want to just kick out. Alderman Parrish. Thank you.
Thank you. Not quite ready to jump into it. I'm ready to kick out or keep in. Just wanted to participate in the processes with all of you. Enjoyed it. Just wanted another satisfied after hours. Hearing this at the public or the public market event. So it was proud of the way that we conducted ourselves and well to make this feedback. I'm trying to understand kind of the level of kind of like special interest groups that participated in process. When we say, for example, that, you know, 88% or 63% of the people want a mixed-use library or 85% of the people want a baseball field. Is it, what is that, 85% of what? Is that a statistical, some kind of statistical sample? Or we're supposed to say in the future meetings that 85% of the people want the baseball field here? That doesn't quite feel to be the case. And I'm worried about, I forget the statistical word for it, but influence on the process, we're trying to get. And what is the real opinion from the public? So this is a very good data point. And I guess if they can provide any more cognizance and sampling, that occurred on, you know, there weren't people doing multiple entries, for example, which I may not have observed. You know, so I just want to understand this data better. And it's great data if you can stand behind it. Thank you.
Was a question, right? Or a question for follow-up later?
You're welcome to reply, but when you come back, just more clarity on where the data came from. And is that really a statistical sample or just one input or?
Yeah, I mean, that's, it's really the data points that were driven at the open house and the pop-up. But, you know, that was also anecdotal, right? So I think what, I think what we'll hear from the consultant is, you know, this, at this point, is just really the participation of those two events.
Not a statistical random sample, but yes. Highly influenced by those who chose it, care enough to show up and give their opinion on those particular evenings. Alderman Parrish.
Maybe you could have like a cast list of what the percentage would be. Because that probably sounds like you've been confused. It looks like, you know, whatever 64% are of the population groups public are, that is really 64% of those attending those events, right?
Any other questions or feedback for Snap? Alderman Strelcheck? It's okay.
Because it has a pool. Sure. I was excited to see the results that came in. For, we'll start with that. Zero dot entry should be the top of the list because if you want a young child walking in, or walking in, you know, taking their kids or grandkids and young kids. You know, that along with some type of water feature in there. So there's acid and active water features, those specifically, just so you know, are also, you know, in Cedarburg, there are the zero dot entry area. As a former swimmer, I was really shocked to see the strong support for that pool. I'm also excited. That was one of the opinions I had to make sure that I was talking about, that just weren't my own, if I was representing the public, that I was elected to represent. You know, so that looks like that is going to be some level of component. Did you have any feedback on the water slides diving boards section? You know, I'm seeing people, you know, heavily neutral to in favor of it. And then some more posted diving boards. Was that like in for great safety or?
I will have that information, it's like the details of why's, but we will probably get back in the next phase.
Can we specifically ask for like what our goal was, the general consensus? And where that conversation will run? And I think that's.
Yeah, yeah, certainly.
Really good, you know, shaded outdoor seating, shaded seating seems to be a trend. A bit of caution on the pollinator. Features being close to where it's with. Uh, allergies, I think it's a great option for the, it's a very natural thing and it looks beautiful, but also an area of concern with kids, with allergies, you know, you just want kids in that space. And you don't want to exclude anybody. Kind of like kind of EVA, I would believe. My concern is going to come in as we have really strong support for baseball field. And then you also have strong support for. Those two are most likely going to eat for space. And the ability to do one thing in the pool effectively with the type of features that we're listing here, which we're seeing support for, and maintaining a baseball. So we're going to have to really kind of understand where that balance comes in. And we'll get in some discussion on that. And a little more of that feedback as to, you know, any types of quotes that came from the boards or any type of sentiments that came from the boards could be especially helpful. That's, that's what I've gotten. Any comments?
Well, just maybe to get my eyes around that. So maybe the council would want to see some of that, okay, some of that commentary versus just seeing it flushing out in a, in a graphic or a plain form and periodically from the consultant. You'd like to maybe see the actual comments that were made related to those two features. Yeah, okay.
That would be helpful. Whether that's in a package that, you know, it's transmitted to council is up to you. You know, I just, I would like an opportunity just to see who wants one of us. What was left of him?
I have a little commentary to add. And you look back at page 30, there's a detailed breakout of all the various pool amenities. Some of which you mentioned, the water slides and the diving boards. They, they scored very high and they just didn't make the final finalist. So all the data is there on page 30. So I think that the score is probably heavily influenced by the fact there are far more adults that showed up than children. Some of these events, obviously, kids with like water slides and diving boards a little more than adults enjoying water, you know, pools and things like that, but they did score highly.
And then I'm looking for feedback on uses within other areas, what's a driver's arc? They, side houses are. What are competing for us? I'm not saying commonly, you're competing with their pool, maybe with their pool. They have a good, that way they're definitely even value ready. You know, what, what is it in that space as to whether that's their needs? And that could be somewhat of a deciding factor. I moved on, that's already considered. I wanted to raise my hips very early on. Certainly, many for us.
That's it. We have power.
Oh, also excited to know, really about the search simulator. Right, because I was so concerned.
That's awesome, but you don't have the electric grill.
That could maybe be covered with donations.
Any other feedback on the interim? Alderman Tlakka.
I was just going to say, I'm excited about this. Seeing this kind of laid out, that they had the time to talk to so many people. And they get very well suits with what I thought the results were going to be. People are looking for that gathering space. We have this huge chance to make it a space that we can now use 365 days happily here. People are interested in this gathering. And I think we have a real opportunity to see what that space can hold. And realizing that, as Alderman Strelcheck said, that we're doing biggest issue that will come above is the baseball field versus the pool. And then what kind of like community structure are we going to be able to put in that space that would allow our residents to be using that for a year? So I'm really looking forward to the next phase. I think Mequon is headed in the right direction with the development that we currently already have and that we're able, we're going to be able to fund this and tie in to really make the businesses in this current area succeed while drawing the community and the families that we want to see into this area. So I'm excited and I look forward to seeing what steps.
Any other feedback from the council? Alderman Brett.
So, well, thank you for that moment. This has been a great process. I really appreciate it from the option. That very nice big date in August when we come back, you know, that there's. They wanted to be seen as unique by the team. I think everything else, they cost to end up, you know, something sort of come both then. And that was, that was definitely, that's just reality. You're there, some of the experience. But I'm more, that definitely counts, I think.
Any foreign comments? And once, twice? All right, onto our next item then. We have Town Center Proposed Monument Signage and Street Banner Designs.
Well, hopefully this one will fun too. If you recall last year, we go to the one we're now, basically. Last fall, I was a very strong advocate of a black cabinet. And a few council members wanted to make sure that, you know, we understood all of the design results that that black cabinet would get us. And so when working with our consultant, they did a mock-up for us. They have the logos built, it's just not treated yet. So you obviously are seeing our logo there. And then you're seeing the black cabinet, which we have a thing to use because the LED lights in the logo are going to create the yellow glow because they're in a box. That box is okay. And you're getting essentially like a skeletal image projected off of the black cabinet. So we couldn't really arrive at an alternative solution with the black cabinet. So what's in your packet are two alternatives. And the first is, okay? Yeah, okay. The first would be to use what material the current logo on the gateway already is. So it's, it's patina and metal. You know, so that's what gives it that, you know, because of the texture, it gives it some of that variation in color. Use this for the cabinet, but have the logo be black. The alternative would be to keep the logo, the patina treatment, and then use a very dark and while it's textured, it doesn't, it's going to read very like okay in order to use this for, for the cabinet. So we would, we would use the same treatment, whether it's the vertical signs, those are going in certain locations. The horizontal signs, I think, on the next page, Jack. Let's show you the light view of your yellow glow. And then the next page shows the horizontal ones. The horizontal ones are, are like each side is the OIC crossing. Obviously, we don't make anything vertical. We don't want to block anybody's views, people in the OIC or if you're in the OIC looking out. So we wanted to give the council ultimately the design choice here, which option we prefer. The wood slash would be just like what you see already on the gateway. And they gave us two options, but we would probably not say it other than which are clear. So that's going to be the most consistent with the gateway feature. And it's going to give us the most contrast, which, which are our main things. If somebody left.
Bring back the other one. Right or, right or left?
Right.
Right. Right? Any lefts? All? Vote is all right.
Right.
Literally.
That's the one that's happened, right?
Okay, that was easy.
Great.
And now the other fun part, the banner signs. We've got a rapidly approaching national holiday that use some banner signs on the poles. So we've got a few options here, same, same deal.
Yeah, and we have a broader banner package that we're pulling together that we can interject these banners throughout seasons and make some changes. But I think we'll learn something by implementing this first round of banners, just in terms of implementation. And to put a whole packet in front of the council, I think might have been a lot. So we thought we would start with this and see what preferences there, there are. And we can, these are in stock. We can have them customized, of course, to have whatever language we want on it. Because of the number of banners, we will probably alternate with a coordinating banner that just have the MTC logo on it. So otherwise, it would be pretty repetitive if this was on Cedarburg, Weston, and then on Mequon. So just so you know, there'll be, there'll be an alternating one with just the logo. So we're looking for your preferences. These are, you know, in stock and we can get these here pretty. I don't remember. I don't remember.
Wait, did?
So I looked at this for a few years, graphics under my belt. For me, it was between A, you would do banners or signs, you want something that's bigger or if you have something busy, just want to complement that with some people. I think C gets too busy. For me, it's just too detailed, that it's going to fall out of saying Mequon or something, you know, bulk to our community which aired in line themselves better. I actually probably prefer, exactly in a defense between A and B. However, A will complement the black better than the navy above. I think that it's on black, it's going to stand out. My question on count as far as like how many it was, just to understand the cost suspension amount. That red will be good for about a year or an half, maybe two. Throughout the summer and like start table, let us, who's those starting location. So I'm very quickly so understanding that cost basically will be in mold.
Alderman Parrish.
Thank you, Mayor. We've got us from Alderman Strelcheck. Being at the community foundation luncheon today, it was a good reminder about how the gateway signage came about and the history behind it. So I found that really fascinating, there to type with everyone, just behind all this. In the past, my complaints have been not understanding why the words Mequon wasn't more prominent here. It wasn't quite, I don't see the C. And to me, it looks like Mequon theme's built. I just don't see it. I don't see the C. I'll just, I just don't see it. So for me, I guess what I was excited about the banners is this is the first time I can see the opportunity to have the words Mequon, the word Mequon on every banner. And I would, I would just love to see some, it seems like A is the only one that does that, right? It's love to Sparta, that would be love Mequon.
You could add it, you could add it to the E as well.
What kind of deal is part of? I just think the banners are a really good way to make sure everyone understands that we're Mequon and that this is our Town Center. Love to see some other designs.
So with that, with that idea, I think that this one could say Mequon, and then the alternating one could just have the logo.
Mequon logo?
The MTC logo. And part of, part of all of this, right, is you're identifying your entrance, your arrival, and choose something that's unique and a different part of the city. So we would probably stay consistent with that.
So on the topic of April, July, or Independence Day banners. If a couple of people leaning towards option A. There's some discussion at staff level, there's some sort of consensus of also A because it pops a little bit more. Where it's, you know, other seasons, you might want to be more decorative and blend in for Independence Day. Like it's kind of nice to let it pop a little bit more. Is there a general consensus on that with everyone? Go with option A and see how it goes?
Okay.
A. A, so hands for A. That's almost everyone, so all of us is remarkably easy. Usually these design ones generate a lot of disagreement, but we're strangely all in agreement. That was, that's all staff needs for now. I think there's going to be more banners for more seasons coming forward later. But in the spirit of bogging this decision down now, we just throw these out. just throw these out. So stay tuned. This may be in a couple of months or so, we'll get to vote on something for fall. All right. Um, that takes care of that item. Moving on to item three C, council resolution request regarding campaign finance reform. I'm actually going to hand over the mic real quick to Alderman Parrish. He introduces, one of his constituents first brought this forward and we heard a little bit about it last month during public comment. And um, and tonight he intends to just have a debate on where we go with this. We take it out the committee, you know, what do we do? So if you'd like, Alderman Parrish.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you to Administrator Jones for the helpful overview of the topic. Uh, I had the pleasure of, of sitting down with the rest of mine in District Six. Uh, Kim Hevinger, who I've met around the years, who's a wonderful resident. And so I was fascinated with this topic that she is personally champion, championing. And as, as you all know, we all have residents with different uh, projects and goals and our job is to give our residents a voice. And uh, I think you all heard last, last month that it was a reasonable request. It's a non, nonpartisan uh, request, I'm told. I don't, I don't have a lot of background in, uh, information on this. I'm not personally endorsing it. I'm here to talk about it tonight with my colleagues. Uh, and make sure that my, my resident, uh, Ms. Hevinger is able to present this. It's an interesting topic. So, um, I guess, Ms. Hevinger, did you want to add anything before the council um, deliberated it? I know that there was a draft resolution in the back of the packet. Um, and again, I think Administrator Jones summarized everything very well. The options, the council's options range from reporting this on to the public welfare committee for additional review. Uh, option two, place a write-on in the upcoming agenda for council, if you want to just adopt it. Uh, or option three, uh, indicates that council may forego further consideration of it. Basically that we may forego this, maybe take it up in the future, but not at this time. So there's three options uh, for council to uh, for feedback on. And again, you had nothing to add, or maybe council will have maybe the whole has additional questions. Thank you.
Thanks, thanks for the intro there, Alderman Parrish. Uh, this is a good forum to have a general debate on a topic like this, um, especially when we're all in one room and we're able to speak a little more freely and openly than the standard council meeting. So if anyone's got any opinions on the matter they'd like to share, um, now would be a good time for them. Alderman Parrish.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, I support the concept. Uh, and uh, but my only question, if somebody could give some history on this and you know, typically I get a periodically emails about international events, Middle East conflicts and things. And I always reply, you know, that the, the council deals with local issues. So I don't know what the history is, um, the council dealing with national or international issues. So that's my, you know, more the uh, issue or question. What impressive that sets and what has that kind of history that you're in.
Just having said on this, even I think I can answer the question. So the, the goal is basically states. There's something in front of the state legislature to consider modifying campaign financial reform, recommending it to be modified at a national level. So what they're doing is they're trying to get each state to create this pressure from underneath to basically not allow companies to donate money or unions or really any, any non-person. And uh, so that's the goal. And so by having each city and state endorse this concept, it doesn't, I'm told it doesn't need to be word for word as proposed. We could modify it in any way we want, in fact, I would have bottom. I would have several modifications that I would make to it if we were to proceed. Um, but that's the goal is to basically pressure the state legislature to then pressure the national legislature uh, to get companies politics. And it is true that I don't think any of us really raise money for elections and it is not really a local issue. But the group needs local municipalities to, their strategy is to have the local municipalities step up first because hasn't been a lot of progress. The other one is where the national legislators have, you know, agreed to.
Can I just clarify what's?
Please, I'm doing my best to explain this, your topic. Welcome.
Thank you. Um, what's happening right now in our state legislature, there are, there's a bill that is bipartisan Senate and in our House that is asking, um, is, is saying that the state of Wisconsin is asking our Congress to send amendment to the states that would send power back to the states to determine how campaign finance money is spent. So there are some, in that resolution that you had that you want to change, which that's perfectly fine because they speak about corporations and wealthy individuals and their contributions having outsized impact our and that's true. Most of us would agree that's true, but the focus in front of our state legislature right now is our two pieces of legislation that one in Senate, one in the House that ask Congress to send an amendment to the constitution back to the state. States to be voted on like any amendment. Returning the power to the states to determine how campaign money is spent and how, it's an important distinction. And I think it will help some of you say yes to this because, because of that. So far, twenty-three seats, red and blue, have sent, have agreed on the resolution that would be sent to Congress. We want Wisconsin to be the twenty-fourth state. And so part of our effort is to get municipalities like McOne to say, we think this is a good idea. And to amplify the voices of their constituents, many, most of whom would like to see big money out of Congress. So I just wanted to clarify, clarify showing that piece. I'm happy to answer any questions if you might have to.
Alderman Parrish.
I, I think this is a worthy uh idea that I think that uh, public welfare should take up, is committed to last week, three weeks before the common council. Because I think you are right. You want the voice of people, not the rich and powerful and the well-connected to be deciding our elections. Or playing a bigger role in our elections than we should. And uh, so that's why I would support uh, we go into public welfare for them to uh, review it and bring it to the common council.
Thank you. Any other feedback from the rest of the committee? Um, Alderman Strelchad.
I'm, I'm definitely in support of the constitution. You guys know I like to have people even playing a little bit of politics. One of the real choices, you see, this council is if you have a rather than your campaign finance support, which essentially we all have. Um, currently, I don't know that corporations are allowed to donate through our finance scheme. This is for our general. I know that I never said that I don't think I should. That's like, I'm seeing, so. What I don't understand is I don't understand the difference to what's going on at the local, what's going on at the state level. As it relates to what's going on. I know of the most recent election, there was some ongoing discussion with large amount of money that people with financial, where we're all contributing to, I can't say as a company. I didn't like that, you know, I signed one way or the other, you know, my personal life, I hear I make a plan to take my pride in being not partisan, right? Um, my question, I think, that I'd like to have answered this, if you do choose to review this, is there's a large time gap in which states have called for an amendment, Hawaii in twenty-ten, several in twenty-twelve, twenty-sixteen, twenty-nineteen, and each one. And the same thing happened within communities that went back to the line shareware in twenty-seventeen and twenty-eighteen. So just looking to really kind of understand the drivers of this. I'm also would ask and staff thoroughly review and make sure that this is a nonpartisan request. Um, but I don't want to view as that a partisan opportunity. Our community in a nonpartisan seat, I just don't feel that's appropriate that we weigh in on something that really should be. And I think that's fair statement in regards to the side of the policies. Uh, if those qualifications can be met, I'm comfortable voting and supporting for sending to the state to have. So, um, those are just kind of my, my, my firm lines to be seen to this sort of that city. Regarding these things.
Well, I can offer a little background. If I mistake anything, I'd ask the city attorney to quickly correct me, but uh, there's a lot of Supreme Court case law recently that's deemed that corporations are people too. Um, they're, they are persons in the, in the eyes of the law and um, there's firstly unlimited ability for them to donate. That's why when you see the, the language natural persons. We are natural people. We were born people. We weren't created, a created entity like a corporation. Uh, so that's the distinction. It doesn't really apply to us at the local level. This is this big, you know, national, even some bigger state state level uh, races, you know, we had a Supreme Court race where by most essence, we spent over a hundred million dollars to elect a single Supreme Court justice in a state. Which is absolutely insane. Um, so yeah, it's, it's it's out of control on the right, it's out of control on the left. You've got Soros and Musk and big special interests pulling all those strings that pushes the politics to the, the fringes and it keeps it away from the center where most of the people are. Answer Alderman Parrish's question, we have traditionally not entered into such things. I mean, it's a, it's an advisory referendum that is non-binding. It's really not far place to vote on. Um, certainly would add to the list of people supporting it. But it would be rather atypical in the history of McOne to support something like this on its own. Uh, doesn't mean I'm not in favor of it. I'm just saying that's the history. Uh, and it's fine if people want to bring this forward to commit uh, to the public welfare committee and debate how to draft legally or satisfaction. Uh, one of the things I worry about in my seat. It's hard to get the state to keep us, uh, take us seriously on a number of matters where they do have a responsibility to interact with us. Legislative issues, uh, finding municipal finance. WISDOT, we've had a three-year protracted debate with WISDOT. We can't get a stoplight turned on in McOne Road. Um, DNR, flooding issues, uh, bottles they've probably messed up. Trying to get the governor to listen to any of this. I was pretty close to getting the governor Evers on the flood plane, but we only were able to get to his staff and you'd think he'd be keenly interested. I just, my only hesitation, not that I don't agree with the principles. You start telling the state what to do on things we don't even have responsibility for. They may not take us as seriously. That's a secondary concern. This still may be a very worthy thing to support. So we're going to want to come out of here with a a strong vote of what people want to do next, but that's that's the next layer of thought I have on it. I, I'd probably sign it personally tomorrow. In fact, I probably will. The money is out of control, but is it the place of the council? Uh, Alderman Strelchad.
Question from the city attorney, because businesses are what that is a bit, as a person first right now, basically. Case history, what is the possibility based on my distinction for companies to contribute to a nonpartisan race to hope that students can do things and take us out of the wrong opinion?
Final answer, the rules, uh, the Supreme Court has came up with in terms of corporation and participant, uh, the politics, uh, deeply advised at the state level. There are obviously slightly different rules, uh, overall that the state level first of, uh, on certain things, uh, but in terms of the good salary to participate under those rules, uh, corporations could be, uh, just the same. First.
In fact, it's not such a distant memory when we had recall elections for everything. A lot of that was fueled with outside money in Wisconsin, you know, the local level for boards and commissions and school boards and things. A lot of that was outside money and being driven by national politics, not necessarily local politics. Um, any other feedback from the rest of the committee? Alderman Strelchad.
Um, so conceptually this you know, it's a valiant effort. I do not feel that it's the common council's place to warn this at all. I feel it needs to be a separate position where you're having individual citizens sign it. I don't feel like this is the role of what I was elected to do. It gets outside of our jurisdiction. I think it's money and waters. Uh, not saying that it's a bad effort. It's just, I don't feel that it's a place for us to be involved in this. So I did not believe the words. Moving on, you think? I think that if there's a position outside where we can sign as a private citizen, that one thing that I don't think I shouldn't, but I think I'll take this.
Alderman Parrish.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I just want to add my comments. First of all, I applaud your career and this. Uh, would also tell you that I agree with the concept. But I, uh, I fall on the side that I do not believe this is something that you probably go ahead and take on. You've got a lot of different ideas on the plate right now. I think that there are more pressing local issues. Then we should be spending our time on things something like this.
Any other comments from anyone on the committee? All right, so we have a few in favor of further debate and a few maybe not so much. Um, I think one thing we need to do out coming out of tonight is decide where to go next. So just general support for sending this on to public welfare for discussion. I heard public welfare mentioned a couple of times. Let's try to show of hands. Who are in favor? Add four. I got that correctly? Okay, and who is in favor of of uh, widely declining at this time? That's two. Is there another option or is there a side you want to come down on? We can send it to public welfare in favor of something wrong with that. Alderman Strelchad.
Several ones have recommended that something affects one of the communities and let us value that as an option.
It's not, it's not an option. The, the state changed the rules. Uh, I think you no longer do advisory referendums or referendums. Uh, it would only be a lot of things like, uh, you know, improving funding changes that, uh, or instances that, uh, uh, I forget the name, it's off the top of my head right now, but that, that deviate from the state statutes. And so charter and stuff to where I'm looking for, uh, you can do it for that and for advisory referendums, we can uh, referendums.
That was recently changed, was it not?
Yeah, just it would have been the last legislative decision.
Right, if you needed any proof that the state doesn't want to hear. For most, there, there's your proof. Uh, the state's really got to get this. It's the states and the states alone to push it in Congress is. and Congress's job to push it. Um, they honestly don't want to hear our opinion, but, which is regrettable. Um, you can get your local people to listen, but outside of their local people, you won't get much time with any of them, regrettably. Um, oh, we have a strong poll votes, and there was four in favor of sending it on to public welfare for additional consideration, words something. Guessing that's how we're going to lead this evening, very simple vote. Um, anybody else have any, anything to say on the matter before we go on with the next item? Okay, on the public welfare, at a future date. Um, do we have time, though? Uh, nope, no time, sorry, chief, chief bio. Uh, we'll get an update on Southern Hozaki hiring a vest department, um, next month or the month after, depending on scheduling. Um, the last item on committee of the whole is committee of the whole planning calendar. Any feedback on the calendar is presented in the packet. During seeing gun, we'll move on to the last motion of the evening for the committee of the whole. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So vote.
Motion second, all right. All people please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, you're adjourned, you will.